Whereas the Board of Education has carefully considered in public session and in accordance with its policies have proposed amendments up to the nondiscrimination policy involving the rights of transgender students. And whereas the Board of Education has carefully considered statements and guidance from, among others, the United States Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights and the New York State Education Department. And whereas the Board of Education has, after the requisite amount of readings and public discussion, adopted the amendment to that policy. And whereas trustee Ann Laval has made certain statements in public discussion on the amendment to the discrimination policy voicing her personal opinions about the legal rights afforded to transgender students, among other types of protected groups. And whereas the majority of the board, although respected trustee Laval's right to voice her personal opinion in public discussion on these important issues respectfully disagrees entirely with her position on these issues. Now therefore be it resolved that the undersigned members of the Board of Education hereby distance themselves from the public statements made by trustee Laval at the May 3, 2016.
And these people are trying to kick the one person off of the board that is actually giving me a ray of hope to actually have a good education because the rest of the people on the school board are evil. Thank you.
I would never summon my children to your schools, ever. After watching tonight, eleven members of the Board of Education jump on one member for expressing a heartfelt belief and publicly vote against that member. That is a disgraceful action you should be ashamed of for the rest of your life. You've seen courage in action. It also says something, it says two things about your intelligence. It also says something about the imbalance on this board. And perhaps the imbalance on this board and other boards like you in this state is because the voter participation rate of school board elections is around fifteen percent, which is the lousiest participation rate of any public elections in the United States. And maybe once in a while you should grab yourself by the collar and show some courage when it comes to a stupidity from the president, from the New York State. Why? It's a political year to take everybody's eye off of what's really happening, perhaps a thirty-five to fifty percent increase in negative ratings. Perhaps at this state, at the state level, the government is run like a criminal enterprise. So forty of our state legislatures are in jail, going to jail, or coming from jail. And if you can't stand up to stupid edicts like this as much as the heartfelt feelings you heard tonight, and they are heartfelt, that last kid was excellent, but you don't have to give it a stupidity. Every man that I know of going to the bathroom now feels anxiety going to the bathroom or sending his kid to the bathroom because of the activities that take place in the men's room or possible activities that take place if their kid goes in there. And it's not just cleanliness. Everyone, regardless of the community, if you're a man, when you go into the men's room now, you feel anxiety. So welcome to the real world. Item two, it doesn't make any sense to build a pressure group among your students and your teachers and bring them here to lobby your board when eighty-eight percent of your eligible voters stay at home. Creating a pressure group against yourself, that's ridiculous. Once again, my kids, I love grandchildren, that's why I'm here. And my kids vary between Catholic schools and public schools. I tell them, and I taught twenty years in school, I was in here, I know what goes on in school. And I tell them, you watch your kids, you watch what that teacher says, and to your people in the audience, and to the ones that are not here. The ones that are not here make me sick. If you don't come out from an issue like this protecting your children, protecting what happens in the locker room, you know what happens in the locker room? You know what happens in the men's room, in the locker room, in this school, in other schools, in this middle school, in every school that I've ever been in? And those parents don't show up? They deserve everything they get, as bad as it gets. And you know what? If you just sit, I'm coming, I'm coming. If you just sit back and take the government edicts as they come, you should close this district down and go home and let the state board of regents run this district. Because we don't need you anymore, or any other board for that matter. Thank you.
I just wanted to let Ann know that I'm very proud of her for standing up to a board that's purely evil. And also, the children today are confused because of confused members like you.
Excuse me ma'am, but you're not supposed to address board members by name.
I didn't, I just said the board.
Yes, you did. Okay, so if you'd just tell us what you'd like to share with us, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
No, I'm just saying, you're confusing the children.
Where do I start? I watched the video where Ann begged, literally begged, the dialogue. I watched it five times to make sure that I fully understood where she was coming from. She begged the dialogue, converse, don't take the list that was sent down from the state, which I guarantee you is not all inclusive. I was on an LGBT tube site, and removing the norms as feminine, masculine, there are twenty-seven different titles that can be applied to this community. Are there twenty-seven titles on that list? Does it also include male and female? I think by demonizing her, I think the letter was misunderstood, the girl miswrote it, I don't think she had a full comprehension of what Ann was directing you to. I have my intellectual side, and I have my religious side. My intellectual side will encompass perception. You can change my perception, show me valid proof, stay away from my religious side. My beliefs are mine own. Do I inflict them on someone else? No, they're personal. But to demonize Ann because of her believing in something that she is very faithful to is wrong. Demonizing her and all of you voting against her because she asked for conversation is worse than wrong. I watched the video and I heard a very grumpy, crotchety old man say, "We've already had this conversation." Well, did you really? How in depth did you go? And can you think by skimming it, stamping it, sending it back to the state, I accept it as what parents accept? I'm not turning my grandchildren over to the state. I'll go down in flames before my children are taken over by the state. Take your gavel and let me finish speaking. That's all right, I can talk over that. I'm gonna tell you something, okay? I did a lot of studying. At seventy years old, I've known a lot of different types of people. I have never been against, in my day they called gay people, okay? But I've never been against the LGBT society. As long as they don't infringe on my home, I will support them, I have supported them, and you can take that time also. All right? I have something here from the Regent Law family. It's after midnight. I would like to have this statement.
I understand that, but you've already had several turns at the mic, and it's sudden, these people keep...
One turn, one turn. All I want to say is...
No, this is at least your second turn, and you've passed the three minutes.
Yeah, one turn before this.
Yeah, and you've talked for over thirty minutes. These people didn't have a turn yet.
All I want to say in regard to that, there is no reason that we can still maintain the male/female bathroom and make another nonspecific bathroom. There's no reason. Why do we take the normal seat and turn it upside down? Because the state says so? Use your heads. Children are very, very impressionable. If they maintain the male/female bathroom and then have your non-gendered bathroom, there would be no issue, okay? And people coming in here talking about rape was ridiculous, it was unnecessary. If you have a single bathroom with a lock, one commode, that's fine, but if you're gonna go off into other tangents, then the whole discussion is in the toilet.
Okay, my name is Regina. I'm a member of the New York State Teachers Association, and I feel as if what's happening here is what happened in my own district. And that is, by putting this new code of conduct together, you are, you are going against a people's right here in this school district to be self-determined as to what they want in that code of conduct. They have a right to know. They have a right, not the president of the United States imposing on them what should be home rule. That's all I have to say.
The implementation of this command from on high is insanity. We have a democracy, a republic actually, and for you to just accept an edict, straw of pen from the president, is insanity. You're destroying ten thousand, well, complete, the complete story of humanity has never been like this, and you're destroying it. The question is not how, but why? Why are you doing this? What is your agenda? I appreciate Ms. Laval's courage in standing up to the board. I know she's trying to get them to listen to reasons, but they've already capitulated. And the real question to me is not how they're gonna implement this, but why we are accepting this edict. And I will repeat myself, because you don't seem to care. I know it's because of the money, the president said, anybody doesn't do this will lose federal money. What's it worth to you to destroy the culture? Called during grammar school, and even behind, when I followed someone down a path to petition, I was asking in school and out of school, if he jumped off the Brooklyn Bridge, would you jump too? If he jumped out of the third floor window, would you follow him? Well, you're following, the board, the smartest people in this room are following their leader, jumping out the third floor window headfirst with the acceptance of this dictator's straw of the pen. My friend Ed calls him the potty president. How sick is that? That's his legacy now, Lisa. It is good name reflecting this part of his destructive legacy. And also, where does it come from? His mentor, communist Saul Alinsky, who wrote The Rules for Radicals, which the president has followed to the letter. The president and minions all believe that in order to marginalize those day attacks such as people with strong traditional moral fiber ridicule is a powerful weapon. We must ridicule these people. We must bully Ms. Laval. And so, and she tries to speak common sense. Get read and follow The Rules for Radicals, know the enemy, know their strategy, and use it against them. The current leading presidential candidate also religiously follows Rules for Radicals and was an actual disciple of Saul, at Saul Alinsky's league. The other Democrat candidate for president is a full-blown socialist. This is your agenda, destroy the unshort parrot. Evil is having its day seemingly in every way.
I can give you one minute if you dream real fast.
That's awesome, thank you. Christopher Zaleski from Wofford Hills Falls, and I just wanted to thank Ann for standing up. Very proud of you. And there's a saying that says, courage is doing the right thing when nobody's looking in character. It's also doing the right thing when everybody's looking. And so, I'm really extremely pleased, and I do like what you mentioned about the list. I really think the list is horrible because it makes classes of citizens. When I was in school, I looked out for kids that were being bullied. They'd be bullied for many, many reasons, but whenever I saw it happening, I always stepped in between the bully and the kid that was being bullied. So I feel for people that are being bullied, but I do appreciate very much what you have to offer. You are a unique person, and I'm very proud to figure my friend. Take care.
I'd like to touch upon the uprising issue of the gender neutrality in our schools. I'm live, I'm all about live and let live.
What I do not, I cannot understand is the things that you should be changing, you don't change, and the things that should not be changed, you change. It's almost as if it's an intentional pot starter. Like I stated earlier, school is not a social experiment. You cannot have children of all ages mixed in locker rooms and bathrooms because it's the new thing to do and to make everyone happy. I'm sorry, this is not work of so many levels. One, because it's a safety issue and for a gamut of reasons for everyone involved. Two, stop trying to confuse children when they're trying to just start out, going out, trying to figure out who they are, what they're feeling, and why they're feeling it. School isn't a place to have a gender-neutral bathroom or a locker room, in my opinion. In my opinion. However, I am having a, I, it's totally for having separate bathrooms for someone who is uncomfortable being in either specifically designated room. They don't need to be mixed together. Children at a pubescent age are fragile, let alone with raging hormones and emotional needs. A child going through puberty is, they're learning about themselves, they're learning about their friends. These stages are very self-conscious and awkward for you normally. Why add more confusion that doesn't need to be? You all may think that I'm against you, I'm not. I have family who may be gay, I'm not gonna call them out, but I think what you do and how you are and who you wanna be is amazing. Just think about what you're doing, the legacy you're leaving for the little ones that are still in school. That's all I ask of you. Think about what you're leaving for the little ones. They don't know who they are just yet.
My name is Tracy Scarduzio, and I'm a parent in Wofford Hills Falls. I spoke at your last meeting, and I thank you for changing sergeant parent to have authority. I'm a Girl Scout leader in this community, and I've been a Girl Scout leader for seventeen years, and I've had anywhere from fourteen girls to twenty-one girls where I've had to have authority, but I have never, ever stood as a parent in their place, ever. You changed it in one place, you did not change it in another. And I did say at the last meeting and local parities I might be fine with, but I was reminded, I was taken to court by my own mother for grandparent rights. My mother tried to say that I couldn't have the right to decide whom had it going over my children. I won in that case. The Supreme Court had a case at the time, giving parents the right to decide. You don't have that right. You have my legal authority, you do not have the right to act as my, a parent to my children. I will not incite in that code of conduct, and neither will my daughter.
My name is Rashin Druda, and I'm from Wofford Hills Falls. This is an email that I sent to the board two weeks ago in regards to the code of conduct. One, regarding the legal term in local parities is extremely concerning to me. In this climate of significant social duress, why would an informed parent want to give a school, its teachers and administration, the legal right of their child? Ask yourselves for some of your parents, is this what you would want for your child? I seriously doubt it. If I can see the danger in the use of this legal language in the code of conduct and I am not a parent, how come you are not asking more questions about this? I understand that in local parities has been in place since common law England was adopted and codified in many states' laws. But in the scope of our society where the family is being ripped apart at the seams, parents should not willingly give you permission to be a surrogate. The parent is the primary legal adult to act on behalf of their children. Two, why is there a code of conduct for parents? Why do you, who do you think you are to include a code of conduct for parents? Is this why you want in local parities so that you can take away the right of the parent to act on behalf of their minor child? Is that what this is all about, control? You haven't pulled the wool over my eyes. Three, recess restriction is a core way to get a child to comply to behavior or learn in classroom. As a behavior specialist in understanding human development, children are better learners when they are given the opportunity to play. In fact, they learn through the act of play, to take a very essential aspect of learning from a child and make them further available. Are the actual issues of why the child may not be an active and positive participant in the classroom really being addressed? Does the child have an undiagnosed learning disability? Is the child going through emotional stress? Or is the instruction diverse enough to enrich all students? Four, the fact that only three discussions were held to talk about the changes in the code of conduct is ludicrous to me. Is this going to be another pass Good and Agenda that this board is so infamous for? Where are the meeting minutes for these meetings? Who are the parents and students involved in these discussions? Is the research consultant available for public review? Finally, I am urging parents of this district not to sign the code of conduct. It would literally be them giving up their right as a parent. More needs to be done to make this a worthwhile document that protects the interests of the children in our schools for the betterment of their learning rather than protect your self-indulged ego's rapturous control. To watch the thoughtless acts of this board is egregious, and you are literally flushing the children of this district down the toilet. I get it, it's because the government told you to do it, but I digress.
My name is George Morton, I live in Opel Junction. I don't know your name, but I agree with much of what you said. The last time the United States did something as bold as this, it was when I was in college in the nineteen sixties. LBJ created what I call putting the black people back on the plantation. He convinced, I went to school in Washington DC, the black people in nineteen sixty-seven were the most conservative. After LBJ did his masterwork on the black community and a lot of white people, you saw the entire society collapse. Our big problem in schools, the falling apart of family. If I were running for president, the first thing I'd do on my campaign is go to federal prison. Go to federal prison, see the children of that generation. Thank you, LBJ. And now we're having the same thing. This isn't a public school or this is a government school.
Excuse me sir, but it has to be about an agenda item.
And the agenda item is this, is this. Part of it, part of it was about transgender. Is that biological science or is that political science?
Excuse me, but that's not actually on the agenda. Could you tell us which item on the agenda you're addressing?
I'm addressing the fact that the code does not truly benefit the students.
Okay, code of conduct, thank you.
And by way of not benefiting the students, it does not directly enough benefit families. I am certainly happy by the five or six members of the board who have said, hey, take a little look at it. It needs it, it needs it to, it's a government school, they can take your rights away, just like that. They can use you the way LBJ used the government to destroy the black family. Go to Newport, go into Poughkeepsie. See yourself in twenty-five years if the government does it to. They could be anti-gay like that, like that. Thank you for your time, God bless you.
But I have a question. Why aren't, well, why aren't there this many people for just our education in general? I understand that it's very controversial that transgender people need to use a bathroom, and I'm all for having a separate gender-neutral bathroom, but I'm way more concerned for my education than I am for someone to be using a bathroom or not. And these people are trying to kick the one person off of the board that is actually giving me a ray of hope to actually have a good education because the rest of the people on the school board are evil. Thank you.
My name's Paul Agins. I'm a lifelong resident of the Donabees Fishville and Wofford Hills School District, and I'd like to talk about BASSA and how it applies to the code of conduct and general good conduct. I know these aren't easy issues to deal with, and I think they deserve our open discussion. Sorry, I took some notes. My wife asked me to talk because we had a conversation about this this weekend. They're very, very hard issues to deal with, and how do we as a community best support and protect the people who are in the minority? I don't have transgender children. I'm a stepfather to two wonderful girls that I have the privilege and the responsibility to be a co-parent to. I don't know what it's like to have a child that has to go through that. I can only imagine what they must endure during the course of the day when they're faced with intolerance, misunderstanding, fear, anger, rejection, bigotry, and bullying. My heart aches for any child that's victimized, no matter the reason. Again, I can only imagine the anguish their parents must feel. We all want the best for our children, our every instinct drives us to keep them safe, to protect them from danger, to defend them from those who would do them harm. We die for them without a thought, and we protect them from any threat ferociously when needed. Having a child who doesn't fit the current standards of normal only increases the threats they may be exposed to. My wife Tracy and I have discussed this at length. We're concerned for our own children, of course, but we can't in good conscience ignore the legitimate concerns of those who find themselves in the minority. So my wife asked me, honestly, Paul, if this was our child, what would you do? Wouldn't you fight for the rights of your transgender child? She said she wasn't sure where she fell on it, and the only way for her to be sure was to imagine it was her child. I have two stepdaughters. The only way for me to really honestly answer this would be to imagine that one was transgender and one wasn't. They're four years apart, they share the bathroom, they've spent most of their lives in the bathroom together, God knows, I've spent enough time waiting to get into it myself. Sometimes their mother's in there with them, we only have one on the same floor with the bedrooms, so I don't get in first, I'm kind of stuck waiting for a while. But if I had one biological boy who identified as female, I would love that child, I would support that child, I would do everything I can to keep them safe, but I'd love both my children equally. I would do everything I can to keep them safe, but I'd love both my children equally. I can't imagine a situation where I would tell my 14-year-old stepdaughter that it's okay to be naked in the bathroom with her 18-year-old biological brother, even if we treat them as sisters. That's just my imagination. It might be wrong, but that's the way I look at it. My wife agreed. But I have two seconds. My wife agreed, and I said, "Well, I guess we do know where we stand." In this purely hypothetical case, I couldn't put one of my child's rights ahead of the other. Hypothetical as it is, if this is what we do in our home home, how could we do it differently in our schools? So all I ask is that we have an open discussion about how this will affect everybody before we make decisions that can have massive unintended consequences. I've got nothing but love in my heart for all members of our community. And I just ask that we please have an open discussion, and if we don't, vilify anybody who asks that we talk about the issues. Thank you.
Roisin Druda again. I'm going to have to severely trunkey what I said, because I realize that a person's name is throughout, and I forgot that was the address. The First Amendment was written to restrict the government from suppressing grievances and action brought up against it from the citizens who are rightfully in charge of the government. It is not to be used to suppress other citizens who disagree on an issue or voice concern over issues. A certain board member brought up, asking that we halt a vote to allow gender neutrality in restaurants and locker rooms and education of social orientation choices upon our children, starting as remiss kindergarten, for further discussion in the implications of these top-down federal mandates. That was ignored and dismissed. If we take all federal mandates, what's the point of control? The states or the separation of powers? What's the point of the Constitution? This board already asks, as if our voice doesn't matter, yet coddling the voice of a minority of people and grossly ignoring another segment of the population. And the only reason this board sits is because of the vote of the people. So, I am asking that the board continue to have meaningful discussion in regards to this issue. It is one that we as a community need to have. Not to spread hate, not to spread bigotry, which the meaning of the word is a person who is intolerant towards those holding different opinions. So, are those who are in fact attacking a certain board member in fact themselves bigoted? Those are the questions that we need to ask. These are the things that we need to discuss. We need to be open if we are going to make decisions as a community, especially because you are voted, elected representatives of this community. Thank you.
This is LaValle. This statement I'd like to make regarding the code of conduct. And it is, it concerns the DASSA regulations and the concepts of equal treatment. If we are really going for the concept of equal treatment, that would preclude the need for specifically identified groups to be protected. The terms hate, bullying, prejudice, discrimination are consistent accusations and often automatic-triggered responses to anyone who so much as questions the concepts of the impact of gender neutrality and gender fluidity on our society. The embracing and encoding of these concepts into our cultures, our laws, and our education system affects every person in our society and our country. And we have the right and the responsibility to engage in an open and honest dialogue and decision-making process with regards to these concerns. But anyone who so much as suggests the discussion is branded uneducated, bigoted, and hateful. The accusation itself has become a weapon infused into this discussion with the intention of demonizing those who question the objectives and consequences of embracing the concept of gender neutrality. The practice of immediately labeling anyone who questions these concepts as bigoted and religiously biased serves to deliberately and immediately suppress this urgent dialogue. And why? Because if I'm not a hateful bigot, if I'm not a narrow-minded religious zealot, if I'm a kind and reasonable and intelligent and well-intentioned person who recognizes and emphasizes with the concerns of the gay and transgender students and loves and respects my own gay friends and family, and yet I'm still raising rational, legitimate concerns regarding these decisions, then you cannot dismiss my concerns out of hand. Then you must consider my perspective with sincerity. You must consider whether these decisions can stand against the true measures of freedom and justice. If I'm a reasonable person raising legitimate concerns, then you are obliged to consider and respond to the concerns in kind and not merely in emotional protest and defiance. The concept of adopting gender neutrality and perceived personal physical identities as the basis for political, legislative, and regulatory decision-making is a fundamental overhaul of our entire society and legislative system. It is beyond reckless for us to continue to implement these radical concepts without so much as pausing to consider the broad impact these changes will have on everyone in our society, most especially our vulnerable children. In our rush to empathize with those who for whatever reason do not identify with their physical and biologically assigned gender or who identify as homosexual, we have failed to pause and consider the incredible impact of the decisions we have made in redefining marriage, family, parenthood, and even biological-sexual reality. The concept that gender is fluid and irrelevant to our physical reality is diametrically opposed to the concept that our sexuality and our physically assigned gender have purpose for us individually and socially. To attempt to simultaneously embrace the diametrically opposing concepts is a recipe for chaos and frustration. The legal implications of dismantling the natural order for families have also been largely ignored. In our effort to avoid offending people who live in alternative family settings, we have all too eagerly abandoned the reason and purpose and the legal status of the biological family. The implications are significant and dangerous. If biology is irrelevant, if mothers and fathers are interchangeable, then who is the legal authority over children? If the definition of parenthood is simply loving the child, then what's to keep your neighbor, or friend, or enemy from claiming your child as their own out of love? What is your legal claim to your child? Do we realize that we have always pursued our biological relationship to our children to be our claim to legal authority over them, and that by virtue of these recent developments we've dismantled that longstanding and fundamental legal tenet of our society? The concept of gay marriage is not simply a freedom or celebration of legal protection of adults to engage in whatever personal relationships they choose. It is the legal dismantling of the bonds which have identified and protected the relationship between parents and their children for all of human history. The state has effectively claimed authority over children by virtue of establishing the concept of interchangeable parenthood. These are but a minute sampling of the monumental implications which have been completely disregarded by our decision to allow the emotional rhetoric to suppress the dialogue of these broad-reaching concerns. There is so much more to these decisions than the efforts to emotionally and legally support the rights of people to live the life they choose. We must be responsible in our decision-making process. In order to do that, we must consider all of the consequences of the decisions we're making. All I've asked for is a discussion of these issues. My perspective has simply been an effort to consider the broad implications and reality of these decisions. It's my right and our responsibility to engage in this discussion. These issues are sensitive. But the accusations of discrimination and hatred and bullying are unsubstantiated. It's time to step back from the rhetoric, emotion, and rage, and sincerely consider the implications of the decisions we're charged with making on behalf of all of our students and our community.